Announce following order, finding Commissioner Rager's session. For January 5th, 2016, roll call.
My family here.
Seattle pick here.
Park here.
Quay here.
Stroud here.
Strain here.
Let the record show that Commissioner, oh, this is not this, and that's it. We stand for a form of silence in the place of weakness?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we, do we have any public comments?
Oh, no.
Anybody have any changes they want to make to the agenda format? Do I have a motion to accept the agenda format as is?
No.
Second?
Third.
All favor? Any votes?
I don't see any minutes included in the packet, I apologize. I don't know what happened. At least not my packet. The packet that I put together, they emailed out, but the hard copy did not.
Oh, this one didn't have?
Yeah, I didn't realize, I didn't look at the hard copy till this now.
I, I wrote it on the line.
And you pick, oh, you're right.
What was that little stuff?
I'm sorry, I didn't go back to check the hard copy.
For those of you who have an iPad.
Or a Mac, but a problem.
Or a Mac, I guess. There is an app called iAnnotate. That U-I, letter I, the word annotate.
That's the back one.
And, I think it's free, but I don't know.
No, it's not.
$10.
It's not anymore.
Yeah.
But you load it onto your iPad or your Mac, and when you receive an email that has a PDF on it, if you put your finger on the icon of the PDF and hold it, a window will pop up and give you the opportunity to select what you want to use a PDF in. And if you took the iAnnotate, you can actually scroll through, you can make notes, and you can have copies on it.
You can make changes?
Yes.
Yes.
You can make notes with, that's how I do one of the councils, I type right on the sheet, and then I can copy it. And so I've been using it for, not only council, but for.
This is my first time.
And I banned it, Dennis, I told Dennis about it, and he said, he's pretty good.
You can't make changes to a PDF though.
You cannot make changes, but you can make comments. You can make comments, that's your.
It's called, but there is, there is a program where we can make changes to PDFs.
Yes, there are, yeah.
Yes, there are multiple programs.
Yes.
They're more expensive than $10.
Yes, they are.
Yes, and many of them do not run on Apple machines.
Right, yes.
Okay, Mike, did we do the, do I have a motion to accept the minutes as written? Second?
Second.
All favor? Any votes? All right, we'll move on. Reports.
Chairman, not really a lot to add to this on stage before there's a couple technical highlights. The first one is the March, in March may I be bringing the open space district ordinance language to some consideration. What that means in plain English is you've got a very good definition of public area, which speaks to places where public is invited to congregate. It's a little bit broader language than the statement of intent in the open space district. So I'd like to bring that language up to consideration.
Uh, works on.
Public area definition of the open space.
And how do we differentiate that from open space that is required for building on a lot? And, and, and not encourage public congregation?
Exactly right.
It's a district.
And that's why it ran the works that way, because it's a district.
Yes, okay, that's fine, that's fine.
Open space provides a that way instead of the open space district.
Okay.
Because I think right now that I'm using the open space district talks about a series of trails and things, which in fact it is, but it's also more that.
Got it, okay.
But the, the public area definition is, is pretty good. And it's a shame to have that pretty decent language sitting there. Kind of one, to be honest, 260 something in the zoning orders, and does some pretty good language in this. Probably another thing of note is the historic board met on the 15th of December. There's some language in the zoning ordinance that speaks to building materials. And building official and I have had this conversation. We want to make sure that the language of the building materials as it relates to those two sections, which is the, which are the H-R1 designation and the C1 designation, the building material language actually also aligns with the language from the historic district guidelines, and then also from building code. So we've got, we actually addressed building materials in three separate documents. You know, we have someone just on the staff side making sure that all the documents are aligned. So at some point this spring, perhaps a joint meeting, this condition in the historic board might be a worthwhile endeavor to at least go over that language. So historic board, then we work in reviewing that historic district guidelines over the year, and that whole process will probably wind up by March. So maybe a four, maybe a five, be a good time out. And the draft tourism zone ordinance line, or does that mean attorney? Still waiting with you.
Yep.
It's our best of my mouth, we haven't heard anything back. Point of contact on that will be the town manager, so I'm sure he can help me out.
What kind of timeframe are we looking at there? Days, weeks, months?
It went off before, maybe the 17th, 18th of December. So I don't know, I'm not particularly optimistic that the attorney would have all the time to look at things between Christmas and New Year's. Hopefully, it's in the not too distant future, hopefully in the next couple of weeks we get some, we get some comment back.
You said you also sent out to.
Yes.
Businesses.
Yeah.
Did you ask for timeframe on those guys?
I said it was open until the council voted on it, so it's commented, so. We sent out 120 letters, five were returned for any incorrect postage, incorrect address, and we've heard that comments, I believe, from them. But I'll take comments anytime. And I think that's probably about it. The only thing that's maybe out there, well, we find a site to move forward, the only thing maybe out there on the horizon is the weapons board may have to need to consider a temporary application for the relocation of wave attenuator devices that are located back there off of Davis and the apartments, the series apartments. The October spawned a lot of sand erosion up there. Once sand hit, it was even worse. The wave attenuators are meant to sort of break up the wave action anyway. So right now that's being considered at the state level to see if those attenuators can be proposed to actually be closer to the shore to maximize the wave disrupting, wave disruption nature of the attenuators.
And if the decision is, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask if those were what we were quoting, what asked me for it?
Yes.
Is it really a yes?
Should the, should the agreement come down, yes, how's it gonna get funded?
What direct property, what they were, their property, what they were the direct beneficiaries?
They were initially, I believe.
Yeah.
Property, yeah.
That's right, okay.
It was going permanent.
Okay.
Other than that, do you have anything else? Also, Mr. Chairman, also had a little vision problems, and I had tubules dilated about 3 o'clock. So.
Welcome to my world, more or less functional, but I want us. That's why I have my doctor's appointment on Friday afternoon. I bet, well, you can remind us, definitely regret.
Thank you for understanding.
Yes, no problem. Any questions on this other part? Okay. Any comments on annual report?
We only have six new single family homes to start with in 2015. Form B, well, it's a, it's a permit. It says, it says, it says construction slash permit. So if they get a permit, they start construction, that's, that counts as, counts as wonder, does he have to have, uh, the C.O.
Well, that's right, the C.O. calls up, well, process of, there is a span of time. Right now these are ones that are either permitted to single family construction or received this year. Full time and maybe a double dip.
Do they all write papers?
Four, they create. Two, construction starts this year.
Just have a couple of minor edits. We're.
Two.
Page four of the pending. The second line down, residential accessory dwelling units, should there be a semicolon there separating it from zoning?
Yes.
Okay. And then two lines down, I think, sections requiring topographical or direct.
Did we have that discussion already?
I thought we did. I didn't see that.
I had some corrections above that on the pending.
Okay.
The second line starts amendments, the satellite dish ordinance text, I think that should either be amendments made to, or amendments to the satellite dish ordinance.
Any other editorial comments for the?
That was it for me.
By a motion to accept the annual report as amended?
So no.
Second? All favor?
Aye.
Any votes?
This now goes to town council.
Okay.
Will that make it to next week's meeting?
21st.
21st, not next week, okay. Just for review.
Okay, Old Business B set March 1, 2016 for joint finding commission, town council public carer arrangement of zoning ordinance text and map amendments.
This is the range of the smaller typographical and enumeration type issues that need to be addressed. So this was also at the November 20, town council, finding commission, joint organization to amend the zoning ordinance for our public carer and then regenation from this board to council by, act by the council. There would be a time for the council to set a public carer at February 8, given a early February meeting, and the late town council meeting in January. So March 1 meeting would probably be the most, the next closest date was at the February meeting of the town council. I'm sorry, I think January 1 meeting, the town council was set March 1 as the public carer day as well.
That's our regular meeting.
Any comment on this? So what are you looking for?
Motion to redo what you're looking for.
Do I have a motion to proceed with the joint finding commission, town council public carer on March 1?
So.
Second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Comprehensive plan of draft.
There was only one text amendment.
Sorry?
What happened to 5A's only ordinance text and map amendments?
We did that, that's, that's, that's the joint session.
Okay, there were two, 5A and 5B.
Yeah, 5B is the same.
No, 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 we just, we just wrote them, 5B.
Okay, the 5A came after that, it was out of order.
No, no, no.
We did 5A.
We did 5A, we were till.
And what is this one?
What do you, what do you?
No.
Okay.
5A. I wonder if it was attached in that.
Oh, that was, that was information, it was the attachment from October 6. Gotcha, okay. That was, I think that was the.
No, 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 no problem. I made mistakes too, so keep me honest.
Well, I had a question on that.
On which?
On this 5A zoning ordinance text and map amendment. Well, it just says on article 2, section 29, page 26, defines municipal community center as a former Cape Charles High School building. That section shall read, see neighborhood community center. Right.
What is a neighborhood community center?
If you look at, if you look at the definition, says it's a place where you could hold civic and educational, educational and, and.
Okay, but it doesn't necessarily exist.
No.
Okay, it's a, right, it's a standard use word.
Okay, I got you.
Well, as you know, that property is sold.
Yeah.
Right. Do we have any edits we want to make to this plan? Well, let's, let's go back and talk about the feedback we got from council so far. Essentially, exactly, exactly. We were given specific feedback that says the plan should be more forward looking. And Steve's saying, I'm not challenging his take, I think we just need to make sure that we have the baseline reference in the document, kind of the stake ground as to where we came from, without necessarily peppering the entire plan. Are there any other corrections, adjustments, tweaks we need to make to this to accommodate Steve's take? We went through a fair amount of discussion of this.
Fair number of changes.
Right, right.
I saw something in your, I thought I saw it, I'm trying to find it, about parking, because parking basically is salt, right?
There's a bullet point about priorities section about non-white parking solutions.
There's a couple of comments on parking on page 26.
Yeah.
And then there's more on page 3, iAn, okay, that's the one with the search.
Not only that, you can just tap on the page number in the table of contents, and it takes you right there.
Yes.
I love it.
This is going to make us more.
Which page was it?
I'm sure somebody else will find it. I'm trying to avoid.
I know.
There's, there's searching file.
There's a section on page 20, on page 30, that says, Cape Charles Harbor area conceptual master plan design guideline, survey, tax, and overall guide to the future development and redevelopment of this area. Any change in the zoning classification in this area should result in this area becoming harbor reached use. The town intends to pursue a connection between Mason Avenue and the harbor and increase parking in the area as redevelopment occurs and land use shifts. Could that be what you were thinking?
It may have been, if that's the case, then that's, that's still valid.
Okay, I heard what you wrote, what you recited, but my page 30 doesn't seem to match your page 30.
Really? Oh, page 30 in the, not the 30, not page 30 of the comp plan, page 30 in the packet.
It's actually on the comp plan, it's page 17 of 65, but it's page 30 in iAn okay, numbering.
Ah, okay, thank you, that's, that's, that's the key. That's the piece I was missing. I was looking at the typewritten content, not what energy was important.
It's page 17 of 65, and then it's the second full paragraph.
Do the, do the.
Got it, yes, now I see it, okay, thank you, thank you.
Do the bullets under section four implementation of the town council priorities, are those still valid based on, based on our CIP that we have here?
I know what page you're on.
That's on, well, I, my comp plan says page 58, 63.
Okay, I can go there.
Ooh. What version of the comp plan you have, 65?
Well, this is the one that just, this is the one, this is the second draft update, this is the one that was given to us.
58 to 65.
See, that's the point, you said 63, she said 65. That's why I asked what version you got.
I got the one that, that they sent out last week, or two weeks ago.
Just one with Elaine's last markups.
And I don't see any bullet items.
Well, these are all bullets, bullets.
Town council.
We talked about, we talked about that at the last one where they were numbered, and I said, and I said.
Oh, implementation, section 4, annotation. Okay, on my document, that's page 60 of 65. Not interesting.
I'm sorry, what page did you say yours was on now?
60, I think. It sure looks like it's still all.
Then you know if you.
I think it's still all valid. We're gonna start looking at capital improvement programs this month and next month.
Now, you got, you got, if you scroll down a little further, you have the capital improvement plan that we're gonna talk about here in a few minutes in there. Is that, is that aligned with what we're gonna be discussing here?
Somewhat, somewhat, some of these are accurate.
Well, it's already happening, it doesn't need to be in there, right?
We're doing capital improvement, yeah. But in fact, 2009 purposes, they ordered, ordered some of those out here since 2009, planning, before we could fill up by that.
But Bill, I think your question is, the priority is not bullets, not numbers.
Right.
To take on a public replacement, that, that is clearly underway.
Correct. I, I have a question, that just raised a, a thought in my mind. We go through this process every five years. Things happen largely dictated by this plan, some, some not. Does it make sense to keep track of all the changes that were made? All, all the CIP kind of things, because that'll tell us where we've come, how far we've come, what we spent money, but, and then that'll give us the footprint for, we're doing good stuff, if nothing else.
At the end of the fiscal year, we'll know what's been done and what's been delayed, and then at least this section of CIP planning change accordingly.
Okay, I guess what I'm saying is, does it, does it make sense? It probably shouldn't be part of the plan, and we should have that somewhere. I don't know if the CIP process is the, is the right place for it.
Well, the CIP process is managed and we've viewed and updated more than 175 years.
Okay.
Considering annually.
Okay. Is this, is that history available when this plan is put forward to the community for their input? Because that, that history would be a valuable piece of data for them to see what we've done so far, what the town, not, sorry, us, but what the town has done so far, as we've gone through this process. It'll help them get, get a touch point for how important this plan is as opposed to just some fine sky company. It actually drives these, I think maybe that, that history will help them understand, here's what the, here's what this process has delivered so far. Is there value in that, I guess is the question.
I'm probably too close to it, and I'd be better to ask.
I think, I think it's good to keep cap, keep that information. And I, I'm, I'm for, you know, you, you used to be, didn't you used to put on, on the website, updates on the comp plan? It used to be there, maybe it still is.
Well, yeah, every, every meeting that we discuss the comp plan, the agenda packets and any changes, the minutes are all on, there's a webpage, just for the comp plan.
So I'm, I know what you're saying.
You're talking about the actual capital improvements.
Well, I, okay, yes, yes, well, okay.
Let me clarify understanding, are you talking about a living document, like an ongoing change?
Yeah.
I think it's.
But if, if, if it's part of the CIP program anyway, all I'm saying is potentially repurpose that content for when the, when the comp, if the plan goes out to the community, that's all I'm saying.
It, it is part of the.
I'm not, I'm not asking for additional work.
In the council package, every month when we review the budget, the finances, there is a page on capital improvement, CIP, what has started, how far along it is in terms of money expended, that type of thing. And that's, that's, that's a monthly board, monthly report.
Okay, right. What I, what I want to do is, okay, maybe there is work. What I'm thinking of is, five years to five years, how has the plan driven CIP?
You mean comp plan to comp plan?
Yes. That would be additional work, right?
That would just be, we could just go through the capital.
So many.
You know, 2009.
Right, right, right.
And just go through and make a comment.
The question becomes, is this something that would be invaluable? Again, what, what, go ahead, go ahead.
It seems like that information is available.
Yeah, it is, it is.
It's just a power to one.
I mean, people don't sit down and read this comp plan, you know, color to color.
No, I wouldn't expect them to. They're gonna, they're gonna read what they wanna read.
Right, if they read it all. I was just saying, that, that information on the C I Ps is available elsewhere. The, the, when does the clock start ticking on this comp plan? We have to review it every five years. So once they accept it, then the clock starts ticking, because we spend two years.
It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter when you make your changes. What matters is when it's five years is up, you start from review process to make a determination, yes, we wanna make changes, or no, we don't.
But the five-year process starts when the Town Council approves.
Yes, yes.
That keeps us honest.
Right, but otherwise, we'd be three years away from that five-year review.
Right, exactly. We'd be doing more than we...
Well, we could be actually, not three years away, we could be eight years away by the time the new one gets out. If you waste five years, then it takes you three years to make the changes, but you won't.
You could, but it could be put in a copy of the, uh, of the...
The old one?
Of the, of the C I P as part of the comp plan as a, as an appendix or something?
Well, that changes every year.
I understand that, but I mean, at that point in time...
Ooh, is, is there a, is there a final, okay, do you remember C I P?
It's a rolling...
Okay.
Yeah, it never, it never actually gets finalized.
Alright.
See, I see this comp plan is, once the Town Council approves it, that's it, then it doesn't get edited or changed until five years down the line.
Wait, wait, wait.
So, I don't, I don't know if that carries...
In theory, you could, you, nothing in the Ginnie Code says you can't do it less than five years. Ginnie Code says you must do it at least every five years.
Well, then that brings up a lot of, a lot of...
You can always make amendments. Yourself can change, you have to make an amendment to a section without having to re-adapt the entire plan. That's what I'm saying.
I'll stand down. Am I getting a sense of who else is interested in the question? Okay. Any other comments on the comp plan?
Well, are we going to leave Section four dot com, Capital Improvement Plan 2015, the way it is? Because something's already in progress.
That's why I said, it should be, it should be, it should be scrubbed to reflect where we stand today. Or where we, where we stand, where we, we submit this to Town Council. It should, it should be...
It should be current, and we probably should...
See, I actually says Capital Improvement Plan 2015, uh, 2015 is gone. I mean, so, I mean, is it 2016, or is it, or is it the fiscal year?
It's fiscal year, and that was last year, fiscal year is fifteen, we're in sixteen.
We're in sixteen, but the, the current Capital Improvement Plan is in, is the next item.
I know that, I know that. But you see, the first item on there, if you look at it, it says, and like I said, there's, it's not prioritized or anything, so...
Yeah, it's not alphabetical or anything, yes, right.
Priorities change, but I'm not sure they're prioritizing it.
No, we don't.
That probably should be added.
Yeah, but something else, it'll, it'll, it allows the community to keep everybody else honest. Hey, how come that's not in there anymore? That kind of stuff, right? Yeah.
Well, actually, some of these are by department as well.
I guess probably not.
That's another way to...
Yeah, but that, without, without the, without the department heading, it has no meaning.
Well, I see some things that aren't...
Well, we've already started, we don't have, we have straight in finance, we need to replace, we don't have to replace. Okay. And I think we're already in the process of replacing the equipment, playground.
That's, that's in the plant.
The funds are some already to be placed.
The civic center furniture.
So, so, so what is, what is, what is the intention? Is it to call the stuff that's already been done? Is that clear?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So we just wanna take out the stuff that's already been done? Anything that's in flight is, is, is mine?
Yeah, if it's restarted, if there's actually been work.
Like the civic center furniture and, uh, equipment?
It's started, but it's not finished. Most of it is done. I still have a few things, but, um, spreading it over several years.
I mean, this could still take another...
So, do we want to remove something that started or put in parentheses, in flagrants? For example, so people know that it started and it's not finished yet, and remove those that have been completed?
That's good.
There you go. There you go. A clearer reference point, this is where these things are in their life cycle. Yep, yep. Yep, that's a good point. Thank you, John.
And I guess we wanna set update it to Capital Improvement Plan Fiscal Year 2016?
That's how, that's how.
That's where we are now.
That's where, that's where it's, that's how it's presented, right? I mean, so I want to...
Yep, yep, yep. There you go. Any other changes we wanna make to the comp plan? Do I have a motion to accept the comp plan amendment?
So, move on.
Second?
I'll say.
Own figure? Do you vote? Okay. Okay. Old Business D proposed fiscal year 2016, something capital improvement plan year.
And this is the report, I was doing the financial report every month with the company, the impact that I chose on the fund, what fund is in, the grant source, did what this year. It's after the recommendation page. So you can now see it.
Visitor Center Improvements. Fifty K?
Pardon?
First page of the C I P, fiscal year 2017, about halfway down, Visitor Center, Improvements at Museum.
Yes. The, the Ketchikan Museum is the official town, Cape Charles, the information center.
Okay.
Uh, I think they were looking at Beniside, for sure.
Um, adding a pull-off area or the covered area where people can, it's not really a weight-bearing sign, but where you can get information.
Okay, okay.
And, um, that's part of the, um, they had a, part of the art hall, I believe. They had a presentation a year or so ago at the Palace Theater, and they were, you know, talking about different locations, and, um, a number of people said at the museum, because it's, as you come into town, is the perfect location for that. It's not, it's not, like, it's, I guess it's a, um, bigger type kiosk type thing.
Okay, alright.
Does the town, um, the tower building at the town hall, is it right here?
So, and, uh, we own the second floor, and they have, um, the fire, for some, I don't know how they separate the two buildings, but the fire department owns their part, and then the part directly below, like, our offices on the other corner, there's an area that's leased to the fire department to store their cars and things like that. But we own the back part of that office where the police department is and the public utilities and the second floor.
I guess, I guess the one thing that's not on here, and I don't know how we can ask for input, that'd be some, some, some sort of a way to our access to the harbor. Uh, and I don't know, you know, I know we had a problem with that road, that road we want to call it, because it really belongs to that year, whatever, still. We've always talked about, you know, easy access to the harbor, so...
That's in the comp plan, right?
To the desired.
Right, right.
Yes, it's in our comp plan, but it's not on, it's not even like beyond here, just like, just like...
That's because it's, it's not really valid until it becomes eligible for purchase.
Well, for example...
I mean, that's basically the issue.
The road, the road, the road, uh, you know, we've talked about, uh, Fink Street going over to taking out the hump, and just letting the hump be, you know, uh, used for mercs. That was in the last comp plan, five years, six years ago, and, you know, it's, it's just...
Well, okay. You, you said Fink Street, and that's not something the topic is.
Is that a beat-up?
That's a beat-up thing, and I don't think, I haven't heard them even mention that. Um, they're talking more about the harbor access road now, that'll straighten out, um, to come through like behind, like it was a old school or... That's what they're concentrating on now.
Right. Okay. Did you get your question answered?
Yeah.
Okay.
But we will be, council should be during the budget, part of the budget process is coming this month, starting, we, um...
It's, we will be looking starting in February.
Good, right, we're gonna be looking at capital improvement program again, and there are things that I think may be added or at least discussed.
Well, for example, you, in reality, in reality, you're not supposed to take a golf cart.
Legally, from Baker?
No, I'm talking about, well, Mason Avenue over to, let's say, the Channing. Take it, you know, right there by the Hattie Rock. A lot of people do it, but you're not exposed to it, in reality.
No, I know where the hump is legal, he's talking about going to the dirt road, because that's not private property.
No, I, I, that is right. It's private property, and it's also railroad property.
Well, we have an agreement with the railroad, um, going over, you know, at the end where that top of the road is, um, the railroad is letting us use it, that's why that little pedestrian golf cart crossing was built. To get to the Channing tracks. Yeah.
We, we got permission to cross the track.
Yeah, railroad allows us to do that, but there's been an issue of people driving cars through there. That's not allowed, that's not...
We just need to make the path narrower, that's all.
And I think they were talking about that.
With bolsters or something, you know?
It's pretty narrow now, I think they had worked on it. Yeah, they did. But we do have the railroad permission for now.
I have a question. Have, have we finished on this comp plan? Because I wanted to take up, take up another one. You okay?
Can you move it?
Video security systems, top of page two. My question is this, is that gonna be wired or wireless? And if it's wireless, what kind of encryption is gonna be used? How are you gonna ensure that it doesn't get hacked?
Since we haven't put it out for R and P...
Oh, well, those regulations are not today.
They haven't gotten there yet.
Okay, okay, okay.
But I think that's...
It's just something to identify that.
My, my, my point is, yeah, we, we need, council needs to be aware, depending on which way they go, they got, they got issues, they gotta go.
Yeah, I think, I think our police and harbor, park and for the harbors.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not, I'm not questioning the need for it. It's a matter of making sure that what you put in place...
Is secure.
Absolutely, yes, yes.
That, I think we know.
Okay.
But they're not, they're completely secure. And nothing is damaged, I'm sure.
Oh.
So everything that's on here is that why, 2015?
No, you can see on here, it's spread out by years, from fiscal year fifteen to beyond, fiscal year nineteen and beyond. It's just different projects that the department has, I said that, that they would like to have, and council has said that it is, you know, could be something to be considered, and they've spread it out over five-plus years.
Okay, I understand it, but it says 2015, and if there's only one following out on that line for 2015, it's either been pushed out to the right, or it's been completed by them.
Yeah.
And I'll take a good example is, uh, it says HVAC, second floor of the library, ten head.
That has been completed.
So...
Yeah, the intent, if it's only in one column, is that they wanna do it during that particular fiscal year?
Right.
If it's multiple columns, it means it's a big pricey island.
No, I understand what you mean, Steve, just quick, but, okay.
And by the way, that, that, that second part, HVAC, still shows up in the capital improvement plan, in the comp plan. So that's one that you...
Yeah.
It's another, it's another...
And fiscal seventeen starts on the first of July, right? Coming up first of July.
That's when we're starting to work on that. I mean, in theory, we're already adding rock to increase the Jenny height, no, not the Jenny height, the break orders, two more feet. But that's happening as part of the new break order we put in, which is a company now.
And the placement equipment, very bottom of page two, could the council just...
They just approved, um, last month, perfect for doing antennas, because of all the money that was raised by the CCP and all the other volunteers. They're gonna do the entire project this year.
So the reverse angle parking on Bay Avenue is put on hold, so I would assume that that, that $1,200 for 2015 is probably never going to, or is that just part of this?
I thought that was complete, just we put up some sign.
Is that just, uh, is that just the, uh, the...
On Bay and...
Put Bay in, I think this is the draw.
Oh, Mason is pretty much complete, Bay hasn't been started. So Bay is on hold, is that...
It looks like $1,200 has already been spent.
So the plan is...
Yeah.
We're gonna look into the fiscal year. And this year, Pine Street Parking Locker, and just do the, uh, trash facility this year?
This isn't the, uh, Paul.
No, no, it's, it's right at the bottom, right at the others, and now, correct.
How many, how many patrol vehicles does the town own? How many patrol vehicles does the town own?
Five, five.
Okay.
Police officers, five patrol vehicles.
Got it, okay, okay. Okay. I saw something I don't think anyone else is gonna know about. Enterprise resource planning system replacement?
Sorry, I'm trying to, should be 2015.
Good point, thanks.
This is gonna be a big year for the multi-use trailer.
It's a good year for town. Breakwaters, they're coming up, you have a long trail, the beach, no dredging, no sand.
They're gonna, they're gonna extend the beach more, or are they just gonna put sand on top of the sand that's there?
Aren't they gonna do the northern?
Yes, there was, there's a plan there.
The northern?
It's a quicker.
They say they're gonna take that breakwater for that Jenny or whatever it is, out, out of the island.
I'd like to make a recommendation that the CIP have format change to carry forward the titles to the second and following pages.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I have tried to format it that way, but they use, they keep using a different.
Yeah, I understand.
Different version.
I understand. I'll ask another obvious, to me it's obvious, maybe not to anybody else. There is, there are two vehicles being replaced, one for code enforcement and one for. Waterworks. Oh, I'm sorry, Waterworks is already done. Code enforcement.
And code enforcement, he's already got this.
Okay.
That's been done.
Can you help me understand why the disparity in the numbers?
Where you see the numbers.
Well, the number for, for Waterworks is 16K, code enforcement I thought was closer than.
Okay, code enforcement got a Ford Explorer, four-wheel drive, because he has to go to sites and cars don't.
Got it, understood, okay.
And the Waterworks just got a, they have small pictures.
Yeah, okay, fair enough. Thank you. Oh.
Did the, did the chlorine system, that been taken here? As it says, 33,000 for this past fiscal year.
It had not.
And, that's this past fiscal year. That was one of the hets we got.
No. I don't think it's, I don't think it's been completed. Everything's been done in phases, and I know right now they're concentrating on water flushes.
Sounds like you wanna ask the question next one?
Yeah, because I know that, yeah.
Well, I just, I say that because if I keep bringing it up, I mean, everybody knows that, that our water here is, you know, we can, we can improve the quality of our.
Yeah, and I think it was the chlorine system that was being used, they all use the, what the TTHMs, what that's named for, so I think some of that is being done.
Yeah, it's exactly, it's reduced TTHMs.
I don't think you're seeing a perceived quality improvement in the water there because one of the issues of chlorine, even though it's more effective, it doesn't gas out like chlorine, so it stays insolucial in your water.
And I know to improve the water quality, bring in on the new wells.
That's, that's 2017.
I don't think they've gotten the approval yet, they've submitted to DQ.
No, there's a problem, there's a problem with, I don't know, state or whatever.
DQ, yeah, it's been submitted probably a year, it's been submitted a long time, we have to wait for them to finish the process, right?
This is just a point of interest, but it speaks to Waterworks. Dean Kamen, a manager of Segway, who was a brilliant engineer, who also heads a small R and D company called Deca, came up with his team for a way to extract water from any available source, drinkable water. His biggest challenge was getting it out in the field, in infrastructure, getting it out in the field where it could be most use. It's a system that uses the medical community's gold standard of distilled water for the output. He has found a partner in Coca-Cola to get that technology out to a billion people. We'll see how it plays out. His original units were in the hundreds of thousands per unit, they were supposed to last three years and put out something like a million liters of water, and yet, from any source, that's, that's the key thing, doesn't make any difference how dirty it is, it'll get generally clean water. As we get into long-term maintenance and, you know, expenditure for the wastewater treatment plant, we might want to keep an eye on how that, how that project is playing out, to see if we can learn something from what they've done, it may not be directly, you know, translatable because the technology and the like technologies are probably drastically different, but there may be some lessons we can learn.
Do you have any references, any video files?
Yes, I do. There's, there's.
Are you talking about the affluent? Is that what you're talking about, mostly? You say wastewater, so I think.
Yeah, yeah, right, right, but it's, it's, the idea is to be able to capture usable drinking water from any source, yeah, there's a.
It could also help on the water side, if we have more and more saline intrusion.
Right, right.
Right?
There's a, there is a movie that was made called Slingshot, which is his name for the system he's partnering with Coke to put out in the field. And his, his objective here is not necessarily just clean water, but to reduce disease worldwide by 50 percent, I mean, it's huge, it is huge, how many people get sick because of bad water. So, again, it's just something, it's just something to, you know, keep an eye on, that's all. If you, if you Google Slingshot and Dean Kamen, you'll get a sense of it's a little nice. And the movie's available on Netflix. But he is, he is, he's an interesting character, he's very passionate about what he does, so passionate, he's decided not to have children, so that he could pursue his passions of making the world a better place. So, yeah, this is kind of an abdah. Okay, any other comments on the CIP? So, this is more to educate, my question as much as what's anything else. All right, do we have any new business? Do we have any announcements?
I have a question, it was, we're setting up for another trade, right, that you said?
Yeah, a big, big time is throughout, the period closes on the 20th of December.
What was that, real quickly, like, for you?
Yeah, it's the Turmstone Channel, so it's the farthest out port of the Pearl Harbor this time, and it's a 200,000 to the yard schedule, 100,000 go on the beach, 100,000 go on the other.
And that's gonna go on the north end of our beach?
Correct, that's what, that's the last part of footprint of the, of the tourist view, footprint of the beach. Now, I don't believe they found out on a survey yet, or they may have, as far as, did that, precisely answer that question about, there's areas of what was placed there that's been washed away that they want to replace, or if they want to contour the whole beach north, and then the area that happened to be contoured, you know, what was contoured last year, I would just leave it there. Anyway, that's got, that, that footprint's also tangible, it's our, our code exclusion zone as well, to make sure that the footprint that we have from code exclusion zone is the most close standing, because, you know, that may require an apartment.
So this is how, that's great large.
Yeah, correct.
This is a question that Bay Creek has been trying to determine whether or not they would be allowed to have some of that sand put on the Bay Creek South beaches.
I know that I have that experience myself.
And that, that was not, I think they would prefer it because they want to transport the sand, the part they're not putting on our beach, here in the north end of our beach, they may have to barge it someplace else, or they could put it on the Bay Creek South Beach, but I think Bay Creek is working with Fisherman's.
Mm-hmm, right.
Return whether or not it was enhanced or diminished type of legal population.
Right.
Never seen a powder league, never seen a powder league.
Tell me all the experts down.
Do you have?
I think the little thing, it's messy and the noise, but sometimes there's like,
apparently the one that's on our beach, you need a microscope to see, or a microscope to find, right? That's what they say.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
On who?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Please don't vote, thank you very much.